We order the November 13th, 2019 Regular Business Meeting of the Wayansboro City Council. Vice Mayor Henry, please.
I will. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Remind those in attendance this evening that if you'd like to speak, we have a sign-up sheet in the back corner of the room, right where you walked in, and would very much appreciate it if you'd sign up. So do so. First item on the agenda is a motion to adopt the agenda as presented for tonight's meeting. Is there a motion to adopt?
Some moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Create any discussion? All's in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next item is number three, which is to consider the consent agenda as presented. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Very good. Any discussion? All's in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next is matters from council members. Does anyone have anything they'd like to share this evening?
I would like to bring something up. We've got a pretty full house here tonight, and I can only assume it's dealing with car assessments or property tax assessments. And that is a hot-button topic, and everybody can come up and speak tonight, and I welcome you to come up and speak. If you need clarification after the meeting, though, I'll stay after and talk with anybody that wants to talk about the assessments. The bottom line is the assessment rates for the last 15 years, everybody in Wayansboro has enjoyed a 50% reduction in the assessed value of your vehicle. This year, with a new computer system that was installed in Wayansboro, we found out we weren't allowed to give that 50% reduction. So to keep everybody from paying $5 per hundred on your assessed value of your vehicle, council voted to bring the assessed value down to 325. So we lowered the rate, but you were appraised at 100% this year because they couldn't give the 50% reduction. Like I say, after the meeting, anybody that wants to stay after, I'll stay after with you. We'll talk about it and hear what you have to say after the meeting. But you're welcome to bring it up in the meeting, and I see the full house. We don't normally get a full house here, so I had a feeling that's what it's about.
Yeah, I appreciate it. I echo that as well. We can all grab corners and talk to y'all individually, but certainly you're welcome to have your time in the public comment period. Anyone else have anything they'd like to add? I just let everybody know that we did enjoy a council retreat a couple of weekends ago. That was helpful, sort of looking forward. Where we are as a community, where our investments are, a reaffirmation of the comprehensive plan, a look ahead and a preview into goals, goal-setting for next year's fiscal budget, which is kind of crazy to think about that as just being November. And I thought it was very productive and appreciated, you know, staff's time and commitment to that. I would say that, you know, if I were to sort of give a five-second briefing of goals would be, you know, as many of you know or may not know, but, you know, we have some of the lowest-paid positions in our region, from on the municipal side of the House, our police officers, fire department, municipal workers, as well as our schoolteachers. And so while we aren't going to be able to fix this over one year, it didn't take one year to get to where we're at, so we certainly can't fix it in one year. But so I just appreciated that conversation. I thought I'd share it. Had the privilege of participating in the ribbon-cutting for the new cottages over at Summit Square, a beautiful facility and a much-needed resource for our seniors and residents at that facility both now and into the future. So really a remarkable investment. And also had the, they don't think they've had a ribbon-cutting yet, but went down to Luke's Hobbies Hobby Shop, which is really, really cool. If you haven't gone over there yet, it's right down Main Street, right next to Benny's between the alley. And they have the longest-scale quarter-mile, well, they have the only quarter-mile scale track in Virginia, which is pretty cool. I mean, I'm not into the slot cars. I may now get into it, but it was really, really cool. If you haven't had a chance to go down there, it's, you couldn't find a more classic mom-and-pop story. Young couple raising kids, and dad works over at Virginia Panel Corporation and wanted to open a business and believes in our community. So appreciate their efforts and all that's, all that's happening. So with that, we will go to item number five is to receive a report regarding the warm shelter, hunger, and homelessness in the city of Wayansboro, and consider presenting a proclamation to Ms. Deborah Freeman Bell naming the week of November 18th to 24th as Hunger and Homelessness Awareness Week in the city of Wayansboro, Virginia. Good evening.
Good evening. So as you guys know, my name is Deborah, and I'm the Executive Director of Wayansboro Area Refuge Ministry. WARM provides shelter and support through transitional housing, winter emergency shelter, and community outreach to people experiencing homelessness through programs and sites located in both Wayansboro and Augusta County. I also serve as the vice chair for our region's homeless response system, made up of over 20 different shelter and service providers that work to address the needs and meet benchmarks set by multiple state and federal agencies who set the standards and expectations for solving homelessness in communities throughout the states, throughout the state and nation. As the holidays approach, people take the time to consider what they're thankful for, and many choose to donate some time, attention, and resources to others. In that spirit of giving, each year, the National Coalition for Homelessness and the National Student Campaign Against Hunger and Homelessness sponsor Hunger and Homelessness Awareness Week during the week prior to Thanksgiving. Hunger and Homelessness Awareness Week is designed to educate the public, draw attention to the problem of poverty, and build a base of volunteers and supporters for local anti-poverty agencies. This amazing event was first held at Villanova University in 1975. This year, more than 700 groups from across our country will come together to work during the week of November 16th to raise awareness about the pressing issues of hunger and homelessness. Sorry. The simple awareness that I want to bring to you guys is that many of our neighbors are living on the edge, forced to choose between basic necessities like purchasing food, paying rent, and going to the doctor. Nationally, recent statistics show that 43.1 million Americans live below the poverty level. 549,000 Americans are homeless on a typical night, and 42 million Americans are at risk of suffering from hunger. And one in five of our children in the U.S. live in poverty. Locally, according to the United Way's ALIS report, 42% of Wayansboro citizens live below the poverty level and/or are asset-limited, income-constrained, and employed. Several hundred of those neighbors experiencing homelessness each year are served through shelter and outreach programs. And this does not include the neighbors outside of HUD's definition of homelessness. Those are people who are doubled up, living with family, or who have inadequate space for their household composition, people staying in motels paid for by themselves, people that are staying place-to-place or living in high-rent burdened properties who are, who are below the radar of our current shelter and outreach system. All of those neighbors are also at risk. And as you know, many of those households include children and are reflected in our community's high number of students who live in poverty and must rely on free and reduced breakfast and lunch programs to have healthy meals. Tonight, I'd like to share what our local homeless response system has been doing and encourage you to help our communities with a simple, with a few simple action steps in the near future. Our local collaborative group of homeless and housing service providers, led by WARM and Valley Community Services Board, with key partners like Valley Mission, New Direction Center, Social Services, Veterans Affairs, and many others, was recently recognized at a national conference of homeless service providers from all over our country for the incredible progress and work that we are doing in this local community. Over the last year, our collaboration has re-energized our system to work better together and to better serve those in need. We've made significant steps forward to begin building a true picture of our community's need and to hopefully eliminate revolving doors, overextending resources, and services duplications. My assistant, AKA my daughter, is going to give y'all some information. By doing this, we have begun meeting state and federal benchmarks for the first time and have set a high, and have set a priority goal to end veteran homelessness in our local communities by March 2020. We've established a system that no longer speaks for our individual programs, but instead speaks for our community with a coordinated entry system so that our clients can access the same resources and services and have the support of all experienced homeless service providers regardless of what shelter or program that they are a participant in. This coordinated entry system is designed to have one list of people locally experiencing homelessness, similar to what Charlottesville and Harrisonburg have done for years, so that we are collectively working towards housing for those persons with critical real-time data, client histories, inter-agency plans, and realistic individual and overall goals. We've also increased the access to clinical mental health services for people experiencing homelessness. We've helped Augusta Health develop a healthcare for the homeless program, established a regional homeless information line, added permanent supportive housing for the most vulnerable of our clients, received funds to prevent homelessness, or quickly house someone who doesn't have extensive needs and who can be stabilized with temporary support, and much more. To be clear, our local communities have never had a robust response system, and as a result, critical funding to help our neighbors have historically gone to other communities like Harrisonburg and Roanoke to solve our community needs. With the new leadership of WARM and Valley Community Services Board, we have recently, recently been able to apply for and receive some funding that Valley Community Services Board is the grantee for, but it pales in comparison to what other communities of our size, location, and needs typically receive. We are working hard to continue meeting benchmarks and to become competitive enough to receive funding to solve our community's needs within our own communities. To help, I have a few calls, calls to action for our local governments. Augusta County Board of Supervisors is getting the same call to action tonight as well. So one, we ask that you consider assigning a representative of your body or staff to attend our monthly meeting of service providers held at Valley Mission on the second Tuesday of each month at 10:00 a.m. Having someone from your team begin participating in these conversations, joining the change that our organizations have embarked on, and contributing to our strategies to make homelessness rare, brief, and nonrecurring in our community is crucial. Second, we ask that you look at how you look at homelessness via your municipal plans related to community development, planning, housing, et cetera, and work directly with our leaders when addressing homelessness and housing instability and the community-level goals that are set to solve them. Many communities have clear goals and plans to work together to end homelessness from perspectives beyond subsidized housing and public housing authorities. We have not adequately done this locally, and the time to change that is now. And along with that requested action, my third and final request is for you to strongly encourage our public housing authority to participate in our collaborative group that is working, working hard to solve homelessness and reports to state and federal agencies for our communities. At this time, there are not any housing authorities actively participating in the group or the collaborative work. Their participation is key, so I ask that you help us build a stronger bridge with our local reps. In closing, my daughter gave you guys Christmas gifts that are ornaments made from the children currently residing at Ruth's WARM house. And there's also some information about WARM and our regional homeless response system. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much. Well, with that, I have the honor and privilege of reading the following proclamation. Whereas for more than 27 years, the National Coalition for the Homeless and National Student Campaign Against Hunger and Homelessness, homelessness have sponsored National Hunger and Homelessness Awareness Week. And whereas many Americans are living on the edge, forced to choose between basic necessities like purchasing food, paying rent, or going to the doctor, and whereas 43.1 million Americans live below the poverty level, and whereas 549,000 Americans are homeless on a typical night, whereas 42 million Americans are at risk of suffering from hunger, and whereas one in five children in the United States live in poverty, and whereas as this Thanksgiving holiday approaches, most people take time to consider what they're thankful for and donate some of their time, attention, and resources to others, and whereas as a society, we have the resources and knowledge to end hunger and homelessness, we just need the collective will to make ideas a reality. Therefore, I Terry R. Short Jr. as mayor, and on behalf of the Wayansboro City Council to hereby proclaim the week of November the 16th, 20, 16th through the 24th, 2019, as Hunger and Homelessness Awareness Week in the city of Wayansboro, Virginia. As the mayor, I also call upon the citizens, government agencies, public and private institutions, businesses, and schools in Wayansboro to recommit our community to increasing awareness and understanding of the hunger and homelessness problem in the city and educate the public about the many reasons people are hungry and homeless and the accessible services for all affected citizens. So we've got this for you, Deborah, this evening. Thank you for all that you do.
Thank you. And not being rude, I'm leaving. We have a shelter. It's a high.
Talk about call to action. So with the, with the weather and the cold coming on, they opened up a white flag operation, right, Deborah? Where's that going to, where's, where's the white flag facility?
Wayansboro Church of Brethren, 364 Bridge Avenue. So we have 10 folks there right now. And we had, and I want to point out that probably half of the 10 are employed and clearly are working and just have, had never stayed. So.
Yeah.
But we just had a good point.
Great. Well, thanks for all that you do. All right. Number six is to consider introducing an ordinance amending the Code of the City of Wayansboro, Chapter 30, specifically Article II, Section 30-30, Permits, Fees, Security for Performance, Article III, Section 30-41, Definitions, Article III, Stormwater Management, Section 30-54, Fees, and Article III, Section 30-58, Stormwater Utility Fee. Mr. Shaw?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, Chapter 30 of the Code of the City of Wayansboro is entitled Environment and includes the local ordinances for programs that regulate stormwater runoff and erosion and sediment control. City staff is recommending amendments to Chapter 30 in order to improve the effectiveness of local programs to monitor and manage construction sites. Such programs are required by the Commonwealth of Virginia and are subject to regular oversight from the Virginia Department of Environmental Quality. In fact, the city is permitting authority on behalf of the Commonwealth when we issue Virginia's stormwater management permits and plans. We're also recommending several changes that are intended to remove definitions that are no longer applicable to current state regulations and local regulations, or that will enhance the clarity of, or the applicability of the stormwater utility fee. In brief, there are several changes. A couple are more substantive than others. One is that in situations where you have land disturbance of less than 10,000 square feet, and these tend to be development of single-family homes or small multifamily homes in some cases, we're suggesting that those developers would post a $2,500 performance bond until their sites are stabilized. So in other words, what happens on a large construction site is once we've come to agreement about the conservation measures that have to be put in place, then a bond is posted to ensure that the site is stabilized at the completion of construction. And we're suggesting the same in conditions where we essentially have an agreement in lieu of a site plan. These are smaller sites, so you don't really have the same level of management plan, but we still have an agreement. And so there would be a bond posted until the, the site has been stabilized. Typically, that means that grass is grown. As well, there are several definitions that are being suggested to be deleted because they're either have been consolidated with other phrases or are not phrases that are currently used in the Code of Virginia. There is amendment to definition of predevelopment. Just to clarify, that the predevelopment conditions are those that exist at the time that a submission of an erosion-settiment-control plan is made. There was an oversight in the last issuing of the city code that left out the portion of permits that are remitted to the state for certain commercial sites. That's, we submit a portion of the permit fee to the Commonwealth. In the case of a, of a commercial site, the $81 of a total of $290 is submitted to the Commonwealth. And then finally, to clarify that when a property is going to be assessed, a stormwater utility fee, that assessment is based on the improvements that are substantially complete or fit for use or occupancy as of December 31st of the year prior to the assessment. So those assessments that are essentially on the tax rolls as of January 1st, a day later. I'd be glad to answer any questions council may have. We've prepared ordinances for your consideration.
Any questions, Mr. Shaw? Is there a motion to introduce your ordinance?
Some moved.
Great, thank you. This matter will be considered at our November 25th meeting. Thanks, Jim. Number seven A through seven C are to consider adopting the following appropriation ordinances for the school system. Seven A is to consider adopting an ordinance appropriating $28,659 to the school funds for stipends and staff development related to Virginia's tiered systems of support. Are there any questions? Is there a motion to adopt?
I'll make it.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All's in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item seven B is to consider adopting an ordinance appropriating the amount of $100,000 to the school funds for stipends, consultants, materials, and supplies related to extended-year programs. Is there, are there any questions? Is there a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All's in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item seven C is to consider adopting an ordinance appropriating $8,449 to the school funds to be used to operate the regional adult basic education, high school equivalency, English language acquisition, and workforce training programs. Are there any questions? Is there a motion to adopt?
I'll make it.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All's in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Number eight is to consider introducing an ordinance appropriating the remaining 2019 Fire Board funds in the amount of $198,200 to the general fund for Fire Board-related expenditures. Mr. Hamp?
Mayor, short, members of council, these are state funds that the Commonwealth provides localities that operate professional fire departments and in some cases volunteer fire departments. In any case, expenditures of these funds are limited and prescribed by the state. As the ordinance indicates, these are funds left over from fiscal year 19 and 18. Our intention is to use $100,000 of the appropriated amount as payment toward the aerial device that the CIP contemplates and that we're in the process of ordering. And then the remaining $98,000 will be used for, as yet to be determined, Fire Board eligible expenditures in the current fiscal year.
Just for clarification, is this one that we can act on this evening or move to the 25th?
So I think the staff has developed a process by which they come to you in the proper form, so I think this needs an introduction and second consideration.
Okay, great, thank you. Any questions? Is there a motion to introduce?
I'll make it.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All's in favor say aye.
Are we adopting this evening or?
No.
No, we're just introducing.
Just introducing.
Oh, just one, I thought he said second.
No.
No.
But he did, but we should have stopped there.
Okay.
It'll come to the consent agenda.
Okay, because consent agenda, I just need one, one to introduce. Okay.
Okay.
All right, cool, thanks. So number nine is to consider introducing an ordinance appropriating insurance proceeds received from FY19 in the amount of $23,624 to the general fund for repairs made to the fire tank, fire tanker truck. Mr. Hamp?
As indicated, these are insurance proceeds from, this was not the city operator's fault. So this is a third-party insurer that will reimburse the city for repairs.
Fair, great, thank you. Any questions? Is there a motion to introduce?
Some moved.
Thank you. We'll consider this at our 25th meeting.
I believe you can adopt this one tonight.
Okay.
I think you're right, actually, Mr. Shaw.
This is because it's.
Insurance proceeds.
Insurance proceeds, okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All's in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, thank you. Communication, correspondence, and calendar. Mr. Hamp?
I don't have anything this evening.
Number 11, a citizen comment period.
Okay.
Mr. Anthony Green. Mr. Green, if you mind stating your name and address for the record, please. Thank you.
My name is Anthony Green. I live at 1913 Monticello Street here in Wayansboro.
Thank you. What we'll do is, so this is going to turn green. It works just like a stoplight. And when it gets yellow, try to wrap things up in red if you can include.
Okay. So I've lived in kind of several different areas throughout the Valley, Valley, different counties, different cities. So the current tax assessment rate isn't what bothers me. It is kind of how the city comes to their assessment value. Currently, I own a truck that is approaching three years old, and you guys are valuing it at more than I would have paid for it. So vehicles obviously don't really appreciate, they mostly depreciate. So seeing that my truck has gone up in value was obviously concerning to me. So I'm just coming to the council to see if there's a new way that the commissioner of the revenue or the council can address the way we come to how we value vehicles, just because the current valuation system seems to be a little unfair. So.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you very much. Mr. Mark Shattuck.
Yeah.
If you wouldn't mind stating your name and address for the record, please.
Yeah, Mark Shattuck, 431 Winding Way, Wayansboro. What I've been talking about is about the same thing he's talking about, the values of the cars. What you don't have here that they have in Northern Virginia and Fairfax County and City of Falls Church is an appeals process for the, if a person gets a tax bill and they say, well, my vehicle's not worth this, you can take it to a car dealer and get a, pay for it, an assessment, then take it back to them, present it, and they make a judgment, and they mail you the, you know, the adjusted bill if you get it or if not. And that's about all I can say about that.
Thank you. Ms. Jamie Pell. If you wouldn't mind stating your name and address for the record, please.
Jamie Pell, 1709 South Allison Circle, Wayansboro, Virginia. I guess my concern is when, and Mr. Short, I already had you written down to call two months ago. You know, we try to keep our city clean, and... You know, we try to keep our city clean, and we have a neighbor right beside us that had to, had a vehicle there that was broke down and been there for a year, and they were asked to move it after being there a year. Now, the neighbor behind us has got several cars that are, been wrecked, and it trashes up the neighborhood. And so that, that's a very big concern, the fact that we, when you put your, when you add a building to your property, you are supposed to be like six feet off from the next person's property. That has not happened. And we have, you know, made phone calls, and nothing has been done about it, as well as he's built on to the house next to the other house. So I don't understand. I just, I guess we're just trying to keep our, our area nice and clean, and that's what we want, the whole Waynesboro to be clean.
All right. Thank you so much. What was the address again?
My address?
Yeah.
1709 South Ellison Circle, right behind McDowell.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Kathy Keller, Ms. Kathy Keller.
Ms. Keller, if you wouldn't mind stating your name and address for the record, please.
Sure. Kathy Keller, 2500 Bellevue Road. Other than the last speaker, ditto everybody else, because I don't have a problem with the rate. Again, it's the valuation, because I do not have a clean retail 2005 Subaru. I mean, I don't think such a thing exists, really. So I'm paying taxes then on something I don't own. I don't understand how that's possible, allowed, but I guess governments can do whatever they want. But that's my concern. I know you have to get the money from somewhere, and I think I heard you say something about we enjoyed something lesser prior to the computer.
We'll talk about that after the meeting if you want.
Yeah. But the thing is, is we didn't know that, and that's not our fault either.
I agree.
Yeah.
Squeeze the balloon, yeah, some money's got to come from somewhere, but this doesn't seem to me to be the right way to do it. And if you're going to use NADA valuations, what would be closer to everybody's value would be average trade-in, or clean trade-in even, because clean trade-in is closer to average trade-in. It's, it's up, but it's not by a whole lot. But when you jump to clean retail, it's up there. Or, simple for a computer to do, take all four values, add them together, divide by four for an average. Fair. That's it.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Mr. Mark Richardson.
Mr. Richardson, if you wouldn't mind stating your name and address for the record, please.
Mark Richardson, 116 Queens Court, Waynesboro, Virginia. I have a question about the whole tax process. I understand the numbers you go through. I've crunched the numbers. I got a 53% increase over my last year's taxes. It's a combination of the rate was hiked, the discount amount was cut, and NADA value is extremely high. I have a, you know, you have a community where a tremendous amount of the people in this community are Social Security. We get a 1.6% increase for this year, and you give me a 53% increase on my taxes on my car. It's excessive, and it's not right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Karen Richardson.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Ms. Michelle Swain.
Okay. Okay. Thank you all very much. With that, we move to item, I don't have a closed meeting this evening, is number 13. Is there a motion to adjourn?
I'll make the motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We adjourn. Thank you.